Select Board meeting to order, being disorderly already. It is six o'clock-ish and this is the Rutland Town Select Board for December 7th, 2021. Please rise and join me in saying the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Okay, we have a full Select Board tonight. Don Choffey, Joe DiNardo's on the phone, Mary Ashcroft, Sharon Russell, and John Paul Fagnant. So, reminder, I think Don has seen the order rooms. So I'll pass it along for other folks to take care of. And Joe, if you have a chance to get in and sign it, we'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Matt?
So, one thing in the minutes first, and then we'll go into a couple of preliminaries. We have the minutes of the Select Board meetings of November 23rd and November 24th.
Move to approve 23rd?
23rd. Motion to approve?
They have a...
Motion is made and seconded, now discussion. Don?
Like to make a couple of corrections if I could.
Go ahead.
On page five. If I could get there. On page five, I just, it's just a question, Mary. The, it says Chief Dumas was not able to attend the meeting. Was it known why he couldn't attend and why wasn't that put in the minutes?
I don't think I announced it. He could not attend.
So, yeah, maybe we could discuss that at a later time.
If you wish.
Okay.
Okay.
And on page seven, under the the second to last paragraph, under reviewing the fire committee minutes.
Yep.
Instead of discuss the possibility of, I think it should say, Mr. Choffey recommended. Every once in a while, I have a good idea.
And I think I gave you credit for it, Don.
And when I do, I I recommended paying a special rate. It's called a daytime call-out rate is what the, what we actually called it. Well, what I called it, and I believe the committee decided that they would recommend that to the board.
That's correct, and we'll see it when we do our budget discussions.
And also, I, and also I recommended doing something of a letter thanking the employers that allowed their employees to respond to calls. And, and the last, the last one's more of a question than anything else because it just said, I need a clarification on the last page, eight of, eight. Where it said Selectman Ashcroft voted against the motion, Selectman Fagnant abstained from the vote, the motion failed to pass. Is there a definitive ruling? Or where is it, where is it contained that, that a majority of a quorum does not control an issue?
We had two favorable votes out of five Select Board members. And or, and/or, we then had two votes.
Out of three that were voting.
Out of four, because JP, out of four who were present. So either way, it failed.
I thought we had. Sharon was not present.
Correct.
There were only, there were, there were four, but there were only three voting because John Paul abstained.
He voted to abstain. But he was present as part of the quorum.
Is that?
I called it.
Is that a fact?
I called it. Well, he was, yeah, I mean, he was, we could hear him.
No, I thought if you abstained, then you weren't really part of the vote because you didn't vote yes or no.
He was part of the quorum, and it was a tie.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll let that stand. Then fine. Thank you.
So motions made and seconded to approve the minutes of November 23rd. Any further additions, corrections, deletions? If not, and Don, I've made, per Mr. Choffey's recommendations.
Thank you.
On the page seven. All in favor of the accepting the minutes of November 23rd, please say aye.
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 Okay. You have accepted the minutes. Now, the November 24th, this is the Board of Health.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the minutes of the meeting of November 24th, Board of Health. Discussion. It's a pretty short meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so I'm going to circulate these for signature. We've passed the minutes. Okay. We have Jim Hall, and then I think we have, is it the Shanahan's? Okay, let's start with Jim Hall. Yeah. Come on up, Jim.
Either one.
I wanted to show the, the folks here. Jim Hall is the outgoing, well, acting president, vice president of the Cheney Hill seniors that have been meeting as best they can and, and had a wonderful meeting today, put together by Jim. It was our annual holiday meeting. Thank you, Don. It was held catered by Noel's Catering. It was at Grace Congregational Church. We had the Rutland Town School Jazz Band in to serenades. And we've had, thanks to Jim's leadership, growing interest among Cheney Hill seniors. Or just maybe most of us are getting older. I don't know which it is, but.
Why are you looking at me?
I'm not. So, thank you, Jim Hall, for all of your good work on behalf of the Cheney Hill seniors in the town of Rutland. And there was a plaque presented. It's to James "Jim" Hall in appreciation for your many years of service to Rutland Town seniors, December 7th, 2021. So, thank you very much for all of your good work.
Well, thank you, Mary. Hopefully, I was not expecting this. This came and surprised me.
Well, you've done a lot of work to help seniors.
I did what I had, I told I had to do. And in the virus, during the virus period, at the peak of that, my biggest concern was the health and well-being of the, of the members. And some of them, as you know, are not young people anymore. They're not as young as I am. I tried to communicate regularly, usually by email, because most of them had that capability. And I got very few responses back. And so I would just spot check once in a while, make sure everybody was okay.
But thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Makes a big difference.
This, through the, throughout that period. Then, um, we were able to have a lunch a year ago this August in the Tamp, up at Sugar and Spice, and I think you were there.
I was there. I think Don was there too.
And it was very well attended.
Yeah.
And the people were looking forward to get now. And that's really manifesting right now, through the summer, late summer and the fall, we've had an increase of, oh, and we're from 10 to 12 for lunch each month.
That's nice.
I mean, 12 to 14 or 15 was our usual number. And we got up to, I think 26 is the last one. November.
Yeah, the one at the town pool. How many showed up for that? That was but the one that you had up at the town pool, that was quite a few people.
Yeah, um, up at the pool, we did have a good turnout.
Yeah, that was a good turnout.
Yeah, you were there.
I was, I was. Unfortunately, right now, I'm, I'm taking care of a, a more senior than I am. I make her, her meal every night, so I'm running between. So maybe the next time I can make it.
Anyway, it's been a good ride, and I enjoyed doing that. A lot of work.
Oh, yes.
Especially considering the virus because I was by myself. And, uh, but we did what we had to do. Last month, we had the election of officers, so we got a whole new slate of officers coming on to carry on. Because I'm, I'm getting a little tired and.
Well, Jim, listen, there's nobody that deserves this more than you do. And there's an interesting story because you may not like this. But I got to tell you something, you know. An Army Sergeant Major is a pretty tough guy, pretty experienced guy, pretty well-respected guy. You don't see them cry very often. But when Randy Roberts presented this to Jim, he was about as close to tears as I've ever seen a Sergeant Major. And well, he appreciated it. And he deserves it. And we owe him a real debt of gratitude for doing the organization right from the very start of the seniors group. So, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Randy Roberts is the new president of the Rutland Town seniors. So if folks are interested in signing up, you can let Randy know, or you can let Bill Sweet know, or any member of the Select Board. Not that any of us are up there that much, but, okay. Mr. and Mrs. Shanahan, would you like to come up and talk to us? This is the time in our meeting where we hear from folks who are not otherwise on the agenda. So if there are more of you, let us know.
I wanted to say that for the last two years, I've had a single source of information about COVID, and that's been the CDC. And I'm an IT professional and a kind of person who reads all day long. And I have kept up on this virus for two years with the CDC. Not the administration, not Montpelier, not CNN or Fox. And with the current information on CDC, I did not understand your mask mandate. And so I wanted to tell you what they are saying right now so that you can take that into consideration before you ratify this thing. Currently, the CDC is saying that there is no evidence from any country that anybody has ever gotten COVID twice. And that if you have COVID and you have recovered, you cannot carry it, you cannot catch it, and you cannot pass it on to anyone. Additionally, they are not recommending vaccines for anybody who has had COVID of any age. Okay? This new Omicron virus that's coming in and has got people saying, oh, no, more COVID. The South African medical community and the CDC said that the symptoms of Omicron are a general tiredness and slight to moderate muscle aches for two to three days. And some few children have experienced a slight fever of less than a degree. And that's it. That's what's coming in the suite now. So where we are, I don't understand the mask mandate. And I wanted to know what information you are using to make this decision.
Okay, our health officer, John Paul Fagnant, has been advising us throughout. He's also a member of the Select Board.
Yeah, so we, I rely on CDC as well as Vermont Department of Health. I disagree with your interpretation of their information.
It's out there. They're saying, they're saying the CDC has said over and over again in the last month, nobody needs vaccines except people who are vulnerable. Yes, the administration is trying to vaccinate everyone, but the CDC itself is saying vaccines are only required for people who have one of the following four conditions. Diabetes, obesity, a long-term breathing problems, and a long-term heart problems. And as far as they're concerned, the only people who have died of COVID have had those problems. And they are not recommending anything else. So yes, the administration and the director of the CDC, who is a political animal, is saying things, but not the doctors. And I just want to know, before you put this mask mandate out there, that I'm not going to, I'm not going to wear a mask again. We've been through this over and over and over and over. And so if Rutland Town and the stores I frequent most are Joann's and Home Depot, but I can order online and have them sent to my office in Rutland, and you won't see, they won't see the, the revenue, and you won't see the taxes. You know, that's crazy. It's like that, there's going to be some fallout from this thing, especially over Christmas.
Well, let me just tell you that for every person who has expressed your view, there are equal number of people who have expressed a view, they're only going to shop in Rutland Town because of the mask mandate. So what the Board of Health is faced with is a full spectrum of responses to a situation that nobody can give us with any definitive analysis how it works. As town health officer, I'm aware of two cases where the person got COVID twice. As town health officer, I'm aware of a, let me get the denomination right. The spouse had COVID, the other one didn't. So the variations of how this virus affects a human being are almost as individual as each human being. And as a Board of Health, we have no choice but to take the conservative approach because while I'll agree with you that masks will not prevent the spread of COVID, it is proven to inhibit the spread of COVID, so it slows it down. That gives our medical communities, because they're stretched razor-thin, gives them an opportunity to keep up, catch up to speed on the increased hospitalization. So I appreciate your position. I'm sure the Board does. We take a different view of it.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know that I'm, I'm going around to the stores in Rutland Town, and there is many people without masks as there are with masks.
You know, and I always find that curious that in a small community where if somebody broke a leg or if somebody needed transportation, neighbors would rise up in an instant to help them. Yet, on the possibility that a mask might help an elderly native, we have all this dispute. I, I personally don't understand.
Well, I don't understand.
I think we should be pulling together as a community, and we're doing the best we can for the people in the community.
I had, yeah, I had COVID in December 2019. Okay, before y'all ever heard of it, I was down in Alabama, and the whole town had it because of people coming back in from China. And the CDC told us, it's an unknown SARS, treat it like SARS, behave like it's SARS. And everybody got through a fine. And my parents were 89. And my mother's obese, and my father has huge health problems, and we, you know. And it's, it's just been, um, I don't necessarily believe that it's a death sentence for every, every elderly person. That's why it's like.
Well, I, I have to tell you. My sister's brother-in-law got it and died, and he had no other medical issues. My other thinking is, I have a great-grandchild who's four years old, who's also autistic. And I can carry it to him, even though I've had the COVID shots and the booster. I don't want to see that little boy sick, and I don't want to take the chance of him dying. And there have been children that have passed away. So one child is not, to me, is not asking too much to put a mask on. If you feel the way you do, you have that right.
I do. I just, it's, my, my particular child has been locked up in San Francisco for two years. She hasn't been out and, because of older people. But I just wanted to let you know how I felt about it and that.
We very much appreciate you coming in.
As I understand it, I can pay waivers. Yes or no?
The, the schedule does have a waiver provision. That's usually about half of the actual fine. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that answers my question.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
I, uh, as you may know, I voted no when the, when the issue came up. And I just respectfully disagree with the position that the other, that the health officer explained. I still have, I still have respect for my board members. We just disagree. I didn't explain myself then, so I will now, since you bring it up. As a 17-year educator in the town school system, I believe in, I believe that we should respect people's intelligence to make their own medical decisions for themselves. I also believe that they should make their own decisions about respecting other people's wishes. So even though I disagree, and I would not wear a mask, it has been ruled by the health officer that in this public building, we will wear masks. So I have one on. I don't choose to protest by taking my mask off and being obstinate. But I don't wear a mask where it's not required. And I think, um, I'd rather, I'd rather use education and encouragement to people to make good medical choices for themselves and also to respect their neighbors and their fellow citizens rather than hold a club over their head and say, if you don't do this, we're going to do this to you. I just, I don't believe in that kind of a governmental approach to it. And that's why I voted the way I did.
Well, there are, you know, it's just, there are other options. I mean, if Rutland City goes masking too, I've been going to Queensbury every two weeks just to go to the movie theater. Okay, because there's no movie theater here, and I can go dining and eating over there. And I have a Walmart superstore, and I have all the stores I need over there. So if this whole place locks down into masks, we'll just be shopping in New York. So.
Okay. Thank you both for coming in. We appreciate your comments.
I had one question.
Sure, sorry.
Okay, which being fully immunized, why the mask?
Protect the little children or the elderly or the sick.
It can be an asymptomatic carrier.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Also, this is the section of our meeting where folks who are not on the agenda have the opportunity to comment. Are there any other folks who wish to?
An item I want to share with the Board that probably fits in this category because it's not, it's not on the agenda.
All right.
But as you know, I've been working with the architects and the five chiefs to come up with some proposals for our new station.
Can you get these on camera if I want to show them to the folks at home?
Thank you. Do you have enough for all of us, or?
Okay, I can look at them with you, John.
Oh, well, I'm going to need one too.
All right.
Thanks, Jim.
But I'll need those for that. So let's put the site plan up first. So the first page of this is the proposed site plan for the new public safety building. As you know, we are out of compliance with the current Fire Department for Fire regulations, and we're out of compliance with our police department quarters here. And so it's of utmost importance to the safety of our guys that we get into compliance. And the only way we can do that is like what we did in Center Rutland, we have to have a new building. So the page you're looking at now shows the McKinley Avenue property, and it shows the new building, superimposed on the footprint of the old building. You can see the old building as it's drawn out there on the floor. And you can see the configurations and the land contours. Our protectors have been working on this most of last week to be able to hit a building that would meet our needs, but yet, look, it's not the Cadillac that a lot of people wanted, but it's a heck of a Chevrolet. We're looking at it as being a 75 to 80-year building for the town. If you flip over to the second page, you can see now, this is really first generation run at this facility. So the interior configurations could change a little bit. But you can see there's, there's really no extra there. We, we have a configuration of the building, it'd be the four bays for the apparatus. The garage area will house an additional fire truck. And then any vehicles that are necessary to heat up the food truck. The next to that is the alley port, which works right into the processing area, the patrol area, the interview area, and the holding. So you can see that there's been quite a lot given to the layout of both the police department and the fire department. They'll be able to enter the police portion of the building. And then for the firefighter portion, but you have to be certified in order to the police portion. So there'll be individual doors like we have on the exterior of our building now. Everybody will have a code which will fit the door to which they have access. So we're pretty excited about it. I wanted to share that with you as we move forward. I'm hopeful that in two weeks, I can bring you revisions to the interior space. What's important to keep in mind is that this structure fits on our property as it is currently configured. Right? We have neighbors that have been generous, very generous, the fire department, the Baird, the indigenous ranchors of our current location. They have some property behind the station that they would like to develop. So we may be in a situation of mutually being able to benefit each other. If in fact they want to do that, there is a proposal on the boards right now that would result in exchange for the town putting in a town road for the length of the building leading to the Baird property. The Bairds would transfer to the town a small sliver of land that appears right up here. If that were to come to, to come to fruition, that would be a good thing for both us and the Bairds. They'd get their entry road built. We'd get a, a portion of land that would allow us to drive completely around the building. Right now, we can't do that. We don't need to do that. But it would certainly be a nice option if we could get it. But the plan that we're working on right now goes forward without Baird participation. And then if we're fortunate enough to be able to have a meeting of the minds with them, we'll be able to, I'll be able to present that information to you, and you can decide how you want to do it. So, yep.
That, that land that Baird is willing to, um, exchange, that goes the whole length, correct?
No, it's just that little corner right up there, Doc.
Well, I thought that it was right from the front. They wanted, they were going to give us 25 feet more for, all the way across.
That's not my understanding.
Yep. No, I think, I think it was, JP.
Well, we can talk about that later. I don't want to take any more time in the public. I just wanted to get this information out there and let folks know that it's moving forward.
Okay, thank you, JP. Joe, have you seen these, or we'll leave a?
These are fresh off the press. I got these at like 20:05 tonight. I did review them with the chiefs, the police and fire chiefs, and they're all, they've all approved of it.
Okay, so we do have a committee that works on this. Joey, I'm going to leave my set on your desk here, so you'll have a chance to see what it looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else, public comments, anything for anyone not otherwise on the agenda?
I, I just want to make a statement that anyone here that's never walked into our police station over here, it is, I mean, it's just the most difficult. It's one room. Everything is taken care of, so.
Can't really call it a police station. It's, you know, it's a.
Crowded.
Yeah. It's just a, a room to work from. It's all it is.
Yeah.
We're, we're lucky that we've gotten as far as we have with that.
Somebody hasn't gotten hurt.
Well, that's what I mean.
Okay. All right, so hearing no others, seeing no other raised hands, let's move on. Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer. Hey, Carrie.
Hey. Well, I don't have all that much tonight to discuss. Um, we've been working on the budget numbers over time, and we'll discuss that a little bit more, I guess, next week.
Next Tuesday, we're having our Select Board Budget Meeting, and that's the only thing we're going to be considering is going over all of the budgets, and that would include the general budget and the town clerk's budget as part of that. Yep.
And I believe that you have the latest version of what I thought for my part.
Okay.
Um, like I said, not a lot, not a lot tonight. I'm meeting with our auditor tomorrow. Um, our audit, like I said last time, is complete, and he just has some adjustments for us that he is meeting with me tomorrow in the morning. that he is meeting with me tomorrow in the morning. And then he said that he would like to set up a meeting like usual with all of you or one of you or however many. I'll let you know
Okay.
how he wants to do it, if it's a select board night.
Yeah, what we often do is have him meet with one or two of the select board members on the, just some of the things that auditors like to do and go over. And then we bring them in to run through everything with the full board. And I know we probably have some questions about how close are we to using up or, or paying the bond money. So things like that. Yeah.
Did you guys get a chance to talk about that or look at the letter? I know last time.
It is in our packet and I'll, I'll bring it up. I did mention it to town council.
Good, good. And then, let's see, the audit, the budget. And then I, if you have time at the end, I have like a five-minute question for you. Possibly an executive session type of deal.
Okay.
That's possible.
Well, it looks like we're going to have three executive sessions then this evening. One with the fire chief, one with the police chief, and one with, and one with you on, I'm assuming a personnel matter.
Yeah, it kind of goes along with the bills and stuff like that.
Okay.
Yeah, it just has something to do with that. It won't take very long at all.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments for our town clerk and treasurer? Okay. Thanks very much. Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief. Ed sent us earlier today some statistics on calls.
I put a copy on your desk also.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
This is our calls for service the last two-week period. Doesn't appear anything out of the ordinary. We did have some thefts of catalytic converters at Ford dealership that Officer Plakis was able to actually track down through a series of events, things he was able to figure out who did it. Spoke to the person, he admitted doing it, spoke to Junkyard in Chester. And they took the catalytic converters in and he's gonna charge the person. I don't know if the a town resident had his truck, a catalytic converter took off and called me, but it's been we didn't get the catalytic converter back, but we do know who did it and he will be charged, so.
Is, there were other, I think about six months' worth of complaints about catalytic converters. Is it all the same?
We, I think he was able to solve like the last six or something like that.
Good work, thanks.
So that worked out pretty well. I, I did forward you guys the numbers to bring some light to the holiday inn. Things are starting to uptick a little bit at the Green Mountain Plaza, but nothing like it was last year. Yeah. I also have one other thing that was about to, Deputy Chief Washburn's attention, there's a there's, I think it's a spruce tree, Christmas-type tree at the end of Connor Drive and Town Line Road. And it's, if you're driving a small car, it's fine. But if you're driving a, a truck with a plow on it, you can't get out far enough to be able to see what's coming unless the whole front of your truck's out in one of the lanes of Town Line Road. I'll give you the pictures of that just to show you where it's at. It's at the end of Connor and Town Line Road. Maybe you can run it by the tree service guy so we can it's kind of just a
We have a tree warden and he happens to be here in the room this evening.
Oh, do we?
Yeah.
Oh.
Did you write it away?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I just want to take a look first. Okay. So maybe we'll have the tree warden take a look at that and see what you can advise.
I think that's all, you don't have to cut it down, just to take some leaves or branches, that'd be fine. I think that's all I have.
Okay, just in as information, we did receive, you will recall that the select board sent a letter to Shawn Brown, Commissioner for the Department of Children and Families.
Yes.
Itemizing the difficulties the town has had with the Holiday Inn over the past couple of years and expressing our opposition to the continued housing of the homeless there basically for safety reasons.
Right.
And I did, we did receive a reply, and I think everyone has a copy of it from Commissioner Brown. And, well, basically it's, uh, let's see, DCF is housing two hundred and fifty people, including twenty-four households made up of twenty-nine adults and sixteen children at the Holiday Inn in Rutland Town. Not sure how that all adds up, but Rutland County remains one of the highest areas of need. At, in your county, we regularly meet capacity and trans- transport participants out of district to ensure they are sheltered. We take issues of safety very seriously. And then he goes on to speak of the various programs. But it doesn't really address the issue that we, the issues that we raised with him. So we received a response. Have you seen a copy of this, Chief?
I have not.
Okay, you might want to take a look.
I'll get it from Bill.
Okay, I'm gonna, Bill, I'm gonna put it in a pink folder so you can make copies. Thank you. Okay, any questions or comments for the police chief?
I get four.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief. Nice jacket, Chief.
Thanks.
Very nice jacket, Chief.
Lovely jacket.
Yeah.
Thought everybody would want a guy, huh?
Well, maybe Bill is gonna buy us one.
Not much tonight. Not a lot of calls, mostly car accidents. I think four or five in the last couple of weeks. We did apply for a grant. Actually, Ted Washburn helped us write it for some new radios and possibly a an off-road buggy for forest fires and stuff. If we get it, I don't know, but it's a start. And I have
There's federal money out there for, you know, safety and public safety. Is that what you're going after?
Yeah.
Good, good, good.
And I do have an application here. If you guys could approve, it's for Aaron Clark. He'll be eighteen here in a couple of weeks and will be a senior member. So.
Clark, that name's familiar.
I've heard it once or twice before too, but.
Is this a Christmas present, Chris?
To approve.
He's not my son.
Aaron Clark, who is going to be a senior member at the ripe old age of eighteen. Yeah. He is a resident of Rutland Town.
He lives in the city. He's not my son.
Oh, okay. He's, all right. Okay. Any discussion?
We got a city spot for him.
We do.
We do.
If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, okay. Got to find a pen. So the ayes have it, there are no oppositions. We have approved the application for Aaron Clark. Done? Okay, thank you. Anything else, Chief?
That's all I got.
Okay. Reminder to department heads, we're having your budget meetings next week, select board, special select board meeting at six o'clock. And maybe, Bill, if you could sort of portion out times so they don't all have to be here at once. Okay, and see if anyone needs to be on at any particular time. Okay, thank you. Okay, any, any questions? Or we let the chief off the hook? All right. Mike Rowe, Town Recreation Director. Good evening.
Good evening.
So let me thank you too, because I know that the rec department was very much behind many of the events for the seniors, including the wonderful holiday luncheon today. So thanks, Mike. Appreciate your help.
It was well-attended and the kids performed very well. It was good to hear them for the people that showed up. It was really nice.
I meant to add that they not only performed very well, they performed excellent.
They usually do.
They are quality, quality.
They do, he does, Aaron does a really great job with them and he should be very proud. And that's just one of the three bands that he has.
Which one was this?
That would have been known as the, I'm gonna say it wrong, the T-Jazz, which is the upper-level band, which goes out, the band band, which like the marching band is a lot bigger
Yeah.
and has everyone else. And then there's a, a lower, for lower-grade band that is, is a precursor that gets them to the higher level. So he does a great job with them.
The T, is that because they meet like Tuesday?
Yeah, there's M-Jazz and T-Jazz. It's Monday. But he only does one, he's only doing one group this year just to get back in because of COVID.
Okay.
So.
Well, they were great. So please convey our thanks
Yep.
to the school.
They were, they, they were very excited to get out and perform. So that was great.
Good.
So I just have a couple of things. One will be, hopefully weather permitted, we'll, we're gonna start to set up the rink at school. And now we'll take more of an active role rec-wise. And that was a, a very big success last year. And so we're hoping to improve that. And that's strictly Mother Nature. So we'll see how that all goes. So that's in the works. Basketball is ongoing. We will be live streaming our games for people that can't go. You are allowed to attend games. We follow the VPA guidelines and then obviously any school guidelines for, which is essentially VPA for admittance. You have to wear a mask, obviously, into our proceedings. And so I will become the mask police for those events. But we will livestream to the best of our abilities so that people really had a really good experience with it last year for in-laws that don't really live close relatives and they got to see their kids participate. So we will do that as well. So that'll be going, that all starts kind of in the beginning of the year is when games will start. Other than that, I'm starting tomorrow with Mary Beth. We're gonna work on our Act Two-Fifty for the trails up at Northwood. So I know you have a contract in your packet, so if we could table that or just put that off, it was for you. I believe Billy put it in the packet. Yes. We can just put that off. I've already spoken with Jason. And he's aware that we're going through the Act Two-Fifty process to make sure we're all set before we go any further. There's no sense in, in going further without making sure we're dotting all the ayes and the tees.
So
And so we'll work on that.
This is, do we go out to bid? Do we go out to bid under our purchasing policy, given?
It's kind of a sticky rig, because it's not like, this is like a one-of-a-kind show. I mean, he's like the only guy that does this kind of work in the area that I'm even aware of. And I'm in touch with some people that are big in that community. And he's the one who does a lot of stuff like this in the area.
Okay, so what we have done in cases like that, our, our purchasing policy requires us to go out to bid for certain, above certain amounts unless someone is a preferred vendor. Okay, so you might want to explore with the rec committee, having this company being considered as a preferred vendor.
We could do that as well. And then, other than that, I don't think I have anything off the top of my head. I think that's pretty much where we stand. The mower did get fixed. And so that will be whenever they return it. About a thousand bucks, but it, it got, it got fixed for the time being. So it'll be ready for spring.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't think there's anything else that you needed from me.
We've got your budget.
Checking on, you have my budget, so I'll be here next Tuesday to go over that whenever you need me to do that.
Okay, any questions for Mike?
Mary, I have one.
Yep.
Um, Mike, I'm looking at the contract and, and that you just provided us with, and they're doing it at four dollars fifty cents per foot to build us. Do you have any idea possible length of this or, or is this kind of an up-and-year thing?
No, it's in there on the original proposal that you have. The, in, in that outside the contract, in the proposal that you had before that I gave you was the breakdown of the sections of trail. It's, it's equivalent to three miles plus when it's all said and done. But I gave you the proposal last time, and I can provide it to you again if you can't find it. And it has the breakdown of where the trails would be located and the, and the amount of feet per trail. So I have that for you that I did give to you before. But I can give that to you again. That's not a problem at all.
Yeah, because, only because of this, just kind of like an open-ended con- I know there was numbers to go with it, but it's not provided in here. So that might be something that the rest of the board members might want to see also.
Yep.
The whole thing should be together in one.
Yep, and I can do that. But I did give you that printout before and I, I can do it again.
Remember that, yes.
Yeah, I gave you the whole thing, which had it all priced out per feet and location of everything.
Okay.
With, with maps. So, and I can redo that to you. Not a problem at all.
All right, thank you.
Okay, is that it, Joe?
Yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, guys, have a gr- oh, I'll see you next week.
Yeah, you will.
Yeah, I forgot.
And the week after that. Barbara Noyes-Polling, Town Planning Commission Chair. Good evening.
Good evening. Glad to be here. Just a couple of things on the, the planning front. We invited the developer of the Grandpa's Knob community wind proposal or proposed project at our next meeting, and that will be a week from Thursday at six-thirty PM. So if anyone wants to join us, you're certainly welcome. And, you know, we'll be quizzing him about whether there's just one vantage point in Rutland Town of the, the wind turbine, or if there are more. We'll probably ask him about his sharing of project revenues that he's offered other towns. And if there are any questions you have, you want to pass along to me to pass, to ask that night. I'd be glad to to do that if you're not able to make the meeting.
Okay. Bill, will you send to the select board, please, the link for the agenda, which would contain the link for that meeting? So if anybody wants to join in, we can see what the planning commission is seeing all at the same time. Thank you.
That, that's a great idea, Mary, because we do have a different link with the Town Planning Commission. So the only other thing I have, putting on the Regional Planning Commission cap again, with the Pocket Park design, hoping, I'm planning on a public meeting or two of Rutland Town residents early 2022. Waiting, I'm still waiting on that archaeological analysis work from the site that's part of the GMP relicensing. So hopefully those two events will mesh. We're not expecting anything significant from that analysis, but you never know.
Okay. I'm looking forward to that.
Yes, yeah, should be interesting.
Yeah.
We've got a lot. We've got a lot to, to present to the public. I mean, there are oh, is it at least twenty, if not twenty-five features that people would like to see as part of that park, that two-acre park? So. It'll be fun.
Okay. Questions or comments for Barbara Noyes-Polling and our Town Planning Commission?
I have one, Mary.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yep. Barbara, do you know if the, where they're gonna locate that wind turbine on Grandpa's Knob is in the general location where the original one was by CB back in the forties?
Yes, it's gonna be close to that. In fact, there's gonna be some, they're planning on some sort of memorial to that original one. I think there's already a plaque there and they want to augment that a little bit. But from looking at it from the vantage point of Rutland Town, there is a, a communications tower up there right now near the top of the ridge. And this would be the, the wind turbine, and it's just one turbine, would be on um, would be on the western kind of downhill side of that. Uh, the, not, so not all of the turbine would be visible, you know, looking from the east toward west. Uh, but the blades would be and probably the lights, uh, would be visible at night.
Okay, yeah, because, um, well, there was a location up on Route 7, my parents used to live there in the 40s before they moved here to the farm, and at night you could watch that turbine when it was operating over there. And every so many seconds you'd see, you could only see the very top of the blade, so I was just curious if it was gonna be in a similar location, that's actually in Pittsburgh where they were, but, um, it was just, I was just curious if they were gonna do it in the same place.
Yeah, yeah, and, and there's an effect with the, with the turbine and the lights at night is called the ribbon effect. I'm not quite sure I wanna ask about it, um, but it's, it's, it's a pretty continuous lighting effect that you see. Um, if, if you are in that, in that view range.
Anything else from the select board for Barbara? If not, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
And please thank, uh, Mary Beth Polley for working on the Act 250 application, the amendment application with Mike Rowe. It's terrific. Okay, Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board. Hi, Bill.
All right. A few things, um, in your, in your packet, we received a letter C, uh, request from the housing trusts. If you wanna take any action on that or just receive it for now?
Uh, is this? Oh, it's to, it's for us to give them a year-end gift for the housing trust?
Yes.
Are they on our, are they one of the appropriations?
I thought they were.
Give to?
Wasn't any malt specified, though?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna check and see if. Yeah, I don't, or Housing Trust of Rutland County.
I see no figure in that letter at all.
And there's no, they were not on?
Move or receive it on file.
Okay. Um.
I didn't hear that, JP.
Receive it in file.
Uh, and, uh, we also got a letter, uh, letter D in the packet was a response from V Trans in regards to the letter sent to them about the speed limits on Route 7, north and south.
Yeah, I mean, this was the, uh, Joint Municipal Committees of the city and the town, um, we, uh, passed a joint request to V Trans to lower the speed limit, north and south. On Route 7, this is the response, and basically it says, "Traffic operations will contr, conduct a traffic engineering study as required." And we, as the town and the city, will receive a, um, uh, notif, notification when their recommendation comes in. It goes to the traffic committee, and we will be notified two or three weeks prior to when the traffic committee will meet to discuss this issue, so. And first a traffic engineering study, and then it looks like in 2022 sometime, we will be having this, it's like mid-spring. This will be taken up, so progress, slow, but some engineering work first.
Yep. Uh, and the last thing in the packets, uh, uh, new business items, so you can go over it then. Uh, we have received three responses from our, uh, letters for Post Road Water. Uh, Rob did say he wanted to clarify that. One of them came back undeliverable, so I fixed it, I think, and sent it back out, so we'll wait, get, wait a little bit to hear from that. The other two people, uh, were generally in favor of connecting. Uh, they wanted, they asked, both, both asked to be invited to the next meeting.
Good, okay.
So I've got all their information, so I'm gonna wait a little bit to hear back from the, that last one. Um, and then, uh, what we can schedule a, a meeting to, to go forward, but it sounds like so far three of the four are, are in favor of it.
Okay. So that would change both the scope and probably the price, um, again, this is.
Very likely.
Yeah, an extension that the Water Sewer Committee is considering, and it would be out of some of the funds, the Water Sewer Funds.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, earlier this afternoon, I sent a, uh, for, the first reminder to all the department heads about, uh, town report, reports, uh, for their annual contribution to that, so, um, would like to have them in about three weeks. Um, so we can start, we'll start working on that. Uh, would that be appreciated, so we get them in on time? Uh, and.
Okay, these are all published in our town report, and every department has a, usually a one-pager.
Yep. Yep, so everybody got their first reminder. Uh, and then, uh, on your desk, you all have a copy of the most recent budget sheets, uh, as completed, so. Um, all the individual departments are, are in. Uh, Carrie and I have been working on filling in the general one, uh, with recommendations and numbers we've been getting from, from different places, so. We're, we're making progress. Well, that'll be for, for next week, and then for next week, I will, I will, we'll have it up on the screen so we can see it and change it in real time and see how it affects it, so.
Okay.
That's everything I have.
Okay, um, I'm just putting today's date on the budget sheets, cause I end up with so many floating around.
Yep.
Um, it helps me to figure out where we are. Okay, any questions for Bill? Um, anything that we need to go over? All right, no questions, Joe on the phone, anything?
I'm good, Mary, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, all right, I think you're, you're done, and thank you very much. John Paul Fagin, Town Health Officer.
So the only thing I have is the need to, um, make a motion on the mask rule that we ratify our action of the prior meeting, so I would put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, JP has moved to ratify the mask rule that we passed.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded, discussion. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of ratifying the mask ordinance, please say aye.
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 Aye? Anyone opposed?
Yes, I'm opposed.
Okay. So it is ratified for the one vote? Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, committee meeting updates and the schedule of committee meetings, please the minutes, good, thank you, Don.
Back to JP.
Okay, so I'm passing along the minutes, so you each can sign it, and then JP puts those.
Thank you.
All right. Um, Bill has prepared a list of the usual, the committees, um, of the town and what is on the agenda for each one. Frankly, right now, we're all trying to focus on getting the uh, budget approved for each, so I think that's it. Um, Police Committee did have a meeting, the minutes are in. Um, your packet, and mostly it was discussion of the budget, and we will be taking that up next week. So.
Like to, uh.
Yeah.
I'd like to make an amendment to the minutes to that.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, again, this, this falls under the same category as the previous one, when, when you have a good idea. Uh, I'd like it to be in the minutes rather than some general discussion. Um, under C number six, VI, Roman numeral six, discuss using ARPA funds to provide a bonus to first responders. Uh, it says, and will be added to the agenda. Well, I, I don't know when that's gonna be, it doesn't say when. I don't know whether you have a date certain for that, it's not on tonight's agenda, so.
It is not on tonight's agenda.
So, but, will you?
But let's put it on the agenda for, not the budget meeting, but for the following, and you were not the only one to have that idea.
No, I wasn't, no, but, well. I, I originated it, but that's all right.
Well.
Under D.
For whosoever idea it was, I've spoken to the first responders, they'd rather that money be put towards the new station. They're not interested in that, plus they're getting a 5.9% increase already. They were just given a $4,200 raise three months ago.
Well, 5.9 in lieu of 34% inflation rate is probably not gonna keep them with what's going on in the country, but that's all right. The, uh, uh, D, under D, discuss the office staff admin budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Chief Duma said an increase of 28 hours a week is necessary to read the current work, discuss the possible associated benefit costs, we did more than discuss it, we actually voted to, well, we voted to increase it, to recommend to the board to increase it. And i- if we go on with that discussion on the back, the increase in the admin work and so forth. Um, yeah, I was the one that recommended that you go to full-time, and I asked Chief if he, if he concurred with that, and he said both he and the deputy chief did concur that the, uh.
Aren't we gonna take this up at the budget meeting next week?
And that's why the.
Well, let's go then.
Uh, we're just talking about the minutes, JP, though, here. And under, under, uh, JK, under L, discussing the health insurance cost. Um, it says discuss covering some of the costs for those individuals. I think I specifically recommended in lieu of the fact that the admin officer, the police department was, was already covered for medical, that we pay the supplemental insurance costs.
Okay, well, this is, as JP points out, this will all be discussed at our budget meeting when we go over the individual, the individual departments. So if you wanna hang on to that and make your own notes.
I just think the minute should re, the minute, the minute should reflect what the committee said they were going to recommend to the board in the budget discussions. And it wasn't just discussed, it was actually decided.
All right.
I, I believe, anyway, if I'm incorrect, uh, you know.
Whenever the committee, um, we're gonna be taking it up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Don. Okay, um, update on project list, I guess I would look at that just to see if there's, we might wanna keep this in mind as we're building the budgets to see if there's anything on there that would require us to appropriate sums of money to take care of any of those things in there. So I'll toss that to you to consider at our budget meeting, and remember to turn to, and remind me to turn to that when we're, when we're on the budget. Okay, under new business, yep, sorry, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, um, just a couple of things from Highway, um, I believe Walt's at the meeting, and I don't know if Jason's there. Um, but I talked to Walt today about, I think we should get a little, uh, report from them as to what's going on on Highway and, you know, the status of our equipment and where we are.
Okay, thank you, Joe, I appreciate that, and yes, I was gonna ask, so which of you would like to report, or both?
Don't fight over.
So come on up. Jason Bethlon, who is, um, on our Highway Crew, and also here with us is Walter Tripp.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thanks. It's been a wild week, so thank you both for the work you've done.
Absolutely.
So bring us up to date.
So today, we, uh, we finally got our Western Star, uh, seven-yard dump truck back. Um, it, uh, finally left the yard without a leak, so that's a good thing. Um, we are still waiting on the new, uh, 55, uh, dump truck. We're waiting for the, uh, them to get back to us on what the, uh, issues are, and if they're going to end up either fixing the hydraulic pump or replacing it. Um, have not had any word on that as of, uh, as of late, but, uh, and I think Bill told us today that on Friday we're supposed to get the guy to come in and do the, uh, the scales for the front-end loader.
Good, okay, so at one point we had three trucks down, and we're back, two of them are back.
Two of them back.
Okay, and the status of the one we were gonna sell?
That is up and running, we're still using it as we speak, so.
Okay, we have received a bid, um, someone is interested in purchasing it. And what's the recommend, recommendation of maybe the Highway Committee and the two Highway folks at this time? What do we do about the, the offer to purchase that we've had?
Yeah, Mary.
So, I mean, we can't let it go until at least everything's back and running.
Okay, uh, Joe on the phone, go ahead.
Yep, so, um, I talked with Walt today for, for a while about this, and I talked with Sharon a little bit before this meeting. Um, and it would be, I think, in the town's best interest if we hang on to that 350. Um, going, I, I would like to hold on to it at least through the, the winter plowing season. I know that we did put it out to bid, and we do have a bid on it, um, but I think in the best interest of the town, and there's a couple of reasons. One, um, we did have some issues with that new truck, so we were, you know, shorthanded a truck. And the other thing is, is currently, um, Walt's taken this month as the call-out guy, and, and I don't know how him and Jason are gonna work it going forward from here. But it would be my recommendation, and Sharon, we, we talked about this, that the, uh, Ta, Walt be allowed to take the 350 truck home and, and use that truck to go back for it. He is the one getting up in the morning, checking the roads, and it doesn't make sense that he drives in from his home, I think, I believe it's in Middletown, um, in his own personal vehicle, and if he needs something, he has to go to the garage, get the truck and go. Um, he did tell me he had a place he could keep it pretty much undercover, and it would be, I think, in the town's best interest that he had that truck and was able to have, uh, salt on it and, and use it if he's gonna be getting up at 3, 4 o'clock in the morning and checking the roads. And if they decide to, um, rotate who's gonna be doing that, then Jason would be in a similar situation if going forward, or if Walt decides to ca, if they decide to, you know, Walt's gonna do it until we hire somebody, but I, but I think that would be in our best interest. I don't know if Kerry's will be upset about the, uh, the bid, but I think it's in our best interest that we hang on to it.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make that a motion.
Okay, motions made in seconded to allow Walt Tripp to take the 350 truck home. And then, um, to, that would rotate over to Jason if Jason becomes the call person, but Walt is it right now through the month of December. Um, we've got a select board meeting on the 21st. So if you two could let us know who's going to be covering January and, and call-outs from that, that would be a good thing for us to know. So, but right now, it's on the issue of taking, of Walt taking the 350 truck home, any discussion? If not.
I don't have any discussion on that particular aspect, but since it's related to this bid.
We're, we're not on the bid yet, this is just the motion to allow Walt to take the truck home.
Yeah, well, okay.
Okay. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Don?
No, I just think we ought to send, we ought to send the carries of, uh, a letter notifying of our decision and telling them that we we would not hold them to that bid, and that at, at a future date that we would entertain a subsequent bid, because it'll be less, obviously, if the truck is used another winter, so.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea, so, um, Bill, would you take care of letting Kerry's Auto know that we're gonna hang on to the truck? Or at least the rest of this winter, and we'll we very much appreciate their bid, and if we decide to sell it, um, in the future, we'll be back in touch. Okay. Anything else from Highway?
Everything's going okay right now. Everything's going okay right now, we've made it two weeks.
I know.
The other thing is, I'm, I get up at three o'clock.
Yeah.
Look out the window and right now, I've been, I live in Clarendon Springs, up by the victories.
Yep.
And I just go down Quarterline Road, up Schoolhouse Road, make a loop with my own truck and then go to the garage and do the other half of the town. That's what I've been doing right now. And, you know, I don't want to continue using my truck, which we just
That's why you're gonna get, right. Yeah, that's why you've, that's why we
So knowing when to call these guys out, you know, that's like Saturday night, we had squalls at my house. Then here, there was nothing, nothing I called River Road. You get up by Don's and Joey Gennardos and the roads were snow covered.
Yep.
But I didn't think it warranted calling those guys out, so I just did it myself.
Okay, there's an art to this, I don't understand it, but I'm glad you folks have a handle on it. Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, keep in touch as you have been, and I really appreciate that. Joey, do you have something else?
Only that I wanted to thank Jason and Walt for their above and beyond efforts to fill in and do what needed to be done. Now that we do have the big truck back, it'll be much easier to do stuff because the little truck, you gotta make four or five trips back and forth to the salt shed. If you need salt, the big truck, you know, it's like one trip and you can do the whole thing. So slowly but surely, you know, things will get better, but I do appreciate their efforts.
So item B under new business is board to discuss supplemental pay for the highway crew.
Okay, I can think the other street.
Um, it, it is apparent, of course, you folks are picking up the, what Byron was covering for quite a bit of time. Has the highway committee had a chance to discuss this and make a recommendation to the board?
Not yet.
Okay.
This is glad to the first, first I've seen it.
Okay, all right. So if I could ask the highway committee to kind of put your two heads together and make a recommendation for our next meeting? It wouldn't be the budget meeting because that's for the following year. But by the, maybe the 21st, that would be helpful.
Yep, just call me Joey and then we can figure out.
Okay.
Okay, yep.
Okay, good, so we're gonna hold on B. I won't make you sit there anymore, yeah, unless you want to, yeah. Okay. Board to discuss setting January 10th as the pre-town meeting date. This is new business, item C, and Bill has some information on this?
Lynn said that winds up with the, with the school board, but I'm not sure that winds up with everything we need to do for warning things.
Yeah, and it's, it, it's a fairly, it's usually later in January.
Yeah, awful early.
It seemed that way. Yeah. So if it's, so two weeks later would be more like where we usually have the meeting. It would give the departments more, it would give us time to finalize the budget. It would give Bill and Carrie time to pull all of that information together. So I'm, I'm seeing from the nod from Carrie that it might be a good idea to see if we could do it a little bit later.
Your addition.
Because, I mean, you think about the holiday too.
Yes.
And then we're just getting back and trying to get everything together.
Okay, okay, so let's say no to January 10th and see if we can go maybe a couple of weeks later, which is more like when we usually have it. Okay, thank you.
Well, the 10th was on a Sunday, so
Well, that's awkward.
We probably shouldn't do that.
That would be awkward.
Well, the 10th is Monday.
Okay.
That's the 21 calendar you're looking at, Don.
You gotta go to the next year.
That's the 21 calendar along the bottom.
I thought the 20, oh, okay, well, I thought it would go back over to 22, but
You can show up on the 10th if you want to, okay. Next item under new business, D, board to review and discuss bids for the highway truck. We have just discussed that and decided we're not going to accept the bid because we're gonna hang on to the truck for the winter. New business, item E, board to discuss tenant, oh, yes, okay. This is a pending litigation tentative settlement. Let me just make sure we've got nothing else because I think now we have three matters in executive session. This would be one of them. The second one would be a matter that, personnel matter with the, no, it's, it's actually a pending litigation matter with the chief of police. And the third one would be a personal, personnel matter, I believe it is, with Carrie. Okay, so is there anything else before we go into executive session? Any other items of new business? Let me go through the pink folder too.
Yes, Madam Chair, one last thing.
Okay.
And I'd like, I'd like to cover this before, before we go into executive session because we might be late coming out of executive session. I've had some very productive discussion with Sharon Kressell of the President of the Library Board concerning the upcoming budget request and my view that we should go to memberships rather than, than a set budget amount. It was very cordial and it was very productive discussion. The result of which will be that she is going to do some further research and, let's say diplomatic legwork on our behalf addressing some of my concerns. And she wanted a year to be able to work on this. And I thought that was a reasonable request. So in, in lieu of that, I'm not going to be making any, any motions for any ballot items. And we'll, we'll let that stand as it is.
Okay.
And, and I think that's a reasonable way to approach this. It may take a little bit longer, but I think we'll get, I think we'll get satisfaction for the taxpayers of the town and get some of these issues resolved. And, and I thank her for, you know, making herself available for discussion to do that.
Okay, thank you, Don, appreciate that. In the folder, and I think you have it, is a, the letter I referenced last time from the Vermont Bond Bank notifying us that we have unused proceeds from the bond that we took out to pay for the Center Rutland Fire Station. The unused portion is $54,679.04. And the bond bank tells us we can use it for one of three different things. The first is using, using that amount for any leftover project costs for that particular fire station. And I, I don't know as there are, but I will put that out there as the first and preferred, I think. The second is that the funds can be used for other capital projects that we have authorized and would have a useful life of at least as long as the original capital project, which says to me, the new fire station proposed at McKinley Avenue might be appropriate. And then the third thing that says if there are no eligible capital expenses, the excess bond proceeds can be applied to the principal on the loan by written direction to the disbursement agent US Bank.
So I'd make a motion that we apply this money to the new station.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded to apply the money to the new fire station, assuming that the voters, you know, approve whatever. Is there discussion?
I mean, it makes sense, it's a capital project for which the money was originally borrowed and which the taxpayers are paying on. It makes sense to roll it over into the new station, which is also required.
Any other discussion?
Well, just that, I don't really have objection to the money being used for that, but I don't think we've approved that yet. So how can we put money to something that we haven't actually taken any vote on? I mean, we're, we're in some planning stages, so I don't know, I don't know where we'd use the money. We haven't been, we haven't authorized the building of a station, the people haven't voted on it or anything else, so.
So we have had votes on this twice, once when the board voted to use the ARPA funds for construction. And second, when the board authorized the architect to proceed and we set aside a sum of money for that. So this is just the next step. And this money would be required to flush out the specs of the building and, and the different systems in it. So there's definitely a need for the money for the new station.
So we would authorize it for the, for the payment of, of the planning phase?
Right, and to develop the spec so that when we ask the voters, we can get a price tag on what we're asking them for in March.
Okay, well, that makes sense to me.
Okay, if, if there's no objection, I'd also like to pass that idea by town council. I did raise this with him a little and said, hey, we've got leftover money. And I note that there has to be a council's opinion that the expenditure is legal, so.
Well, if the capital, it says right here, we need it, it's gonna have a useful life at least as long as the original capital project. So it clearly, clearly qualifies, so I would call the motion.
Okay, motion's been made to use $54,679.04 from the original bond for the proposed McKinley Avenue Fire Station Police Facility. I just, yes, it's been motion made and seconded.
I, I don't, I, I just, I just feel uncomfortable budgeting money for something that we haven't approved to be built yet. I mean, I, I think we, I think we gotta be specific in saying that we're gonna use this. The motion should be specific in saying that we're using it for preparation of materials to present before the public for the building of a public safety building. You know, you see what I'm saying, JP?
That's fine, I, I don't disagree with that.
So
I don't have a problem.
We redo
So it sounds like the motion's amended to direct this money to the planning, design and
Budget development.
Budget development for the
Presentation to the public, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so that's the motion, Joey, do you have the motion in mind?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm all set, thanks.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, Bill, I think we're going to need, still to pass this by Kevin because I think we need council's certificate on this, so. Okay, I think we've covered everything in the pink folder. So I would entertain a motion to go into
So move.
What, three consecutive executive sessions? One with, with Carrie, we'll start with Carrie on a personnel matter, then the police chief on pending litigation and then with the fire chief on pending litigation. Yes, motion's made, are you seconding the motion?
Second.
As long as Sharon gets a five minute break, we'll second the motion. Any further discussion, if not, all in favor of the executive sessions, please say aye.
Sharon, what size is the bill?
Okay, we're back from executive session.
So I'd make a motion that we
Hey, guys.
Hey, hey, we're trying to do business here, come on. I make a motion that we accept our attorney's recommendation with regard to the Center Rutland Fire Station.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
If the motion carries, motion's made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, good night, everybody, thank you.